All right, we should be live now. Thank you, everybody, for joining us today. We are going to be interviewing Jesse James. He is running for Clark County Council, District 3. Clark County is in southwest Washington. You've got Vancouver as one of its biggest cities there. And we have the Clark County Our Revolution team with us today. Thank you for joining us. Jesse has reached out for an interview and we are so excited to be here today and get some questions answered and see if he fits in. Welcome, Jesse James. What a fabulous name.
Thank you for having me.
Oh, who's that? We love children. It's all good.
Cassidy.
Cassidy.
I'm eight years old.
Eight years old. You are beautiful, Cassidy.
My birthday's July 13th.
Woo, woo, you got a birthday coming up. Happy early birthday.
Is it my early birthday right now?
Right now, it would be early.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
A kitty named DC is resting on daddy's lap.
Oh, I'm jealous. I love kitties. All right, we're gonna go ahead and can we go ahead and move forward and talk to your dad? Thank you, Cassidy. We do, we really are family affair here. So if people have any problems with that, then they're probably not gonna really like us much anyway. So Jesse, go ahead. So what got you to step up and run for Clark County Council? Tell us a little about yourself. What got you kind of getting into this race?
Well, I've been living in Clark County for over 40 years. Minus the time I was at C. I'll talk about that for just a moment here, but I, I started at Louisville Intermediate School in Battleground and graduated from Battleground High School way back in 1985. So I've been in the county and been living here for quite some time. My wife and I bought our house about 10 years ago here in District 3. And since then, we've had both our children. You got to meet Cassidy and then my son Duncan, who's a little younger. Who knows, he might pop in soon. I spent some time sailing. I was a merchant mariner. A lot of people don't know what a merchant mariner does, but I spent my time traveling the world delivering all sorts of products and in the beginning, a lot of food aid to African countries. Got to see poverty up close, started to get to understand the world a little bit better. And also started to see and understand effects of climate on our planet. And coming back home, I've noticed that the county council, for the most part, including my opponent, does not seem to care about those things or really so much the people in the county. I think he has a lot of good things to say. Sometimes he sounds pretty good. But when you watch his actions, it seems as if paving over the county is kind of a priority. I know that he accepts a lot of money for his election campaign from developer types and investment bankers and realtors. To me, that's when you start taking money from people who can profit off your decisions by sitting at the, in that chair, that is where corruption starts. I don't want to accuse anybody of corruption. But I think it's inevitable. You take somebody's money, you're probably gonna owe them a favor. Well, I'd rather take money from people who live here and want to see things get better that aren't going to profit financially off of the decisions and owe them the favor. So that's one of the things that got me wanting to, wanting to run. I really think that the county needs to look towards the future a lot more than it is. The, we have a, we have a 20-year growth plan, which everybody, all the, all the counties and should have now in Washington State with the, with Growth Management Act. But our county has shown themselves to try to do in-runs around the rules on that. I think the act has to be stronger. It definitely needs to, I think every single aspect of that growth management plan, climate change has to be considered. And anywhere possible, negative effects towards climate change or any part of our environment has to be mitigated before things happen. But that's what got me wanting to run and her and her brother are primary reasons why I wanted to get involved. The, the future is theirs. They're gonna be here a lot longer than I am, and I would like them to have a nice, nice place, a livable place, one that's built on some sort of sustainability rather than rampant growth. And that's, that's, that's why I, that's why I'm running.
Oh, thank you, thank you. You're talking some great stuff. Anti-corruption. That's a big thing that we do. We really look at is anti-corruption and election reform and how people are getting their donations, where they're coming from. Cause like you said, you, you know, even if, if it's not a quid pro quo, there is still some sort of power structure within the exchange of money. So thank you for pointing that out. So with that, how are you planning on fundraising or what kind of donor money are you planning on accepting? Or is there any that you will reject?
I will reject money from any, any developers at this point. I think it's important to, to not have that hanging over my head as some favor that needs to be done for them at some point in the future. Currently, our fundraising has been limited to, well, last, last night, we did a little bit of phone banking with our PCOS and that did result in some, some donations, which was wonderful. But we've been limited so much fairly to Facebook so far, which is where our biggest visibility is. So we have more work to do to attempt to get more, more money. But I want to try to do it with us, you know, more money is good, but it would be nice to spend whatever money we have extremely wisely. I don't think a campaign should just be too bloated in money. We have to reach the people in our district, but turns out trying to reach 60,000 people can be expensive.
Right, yeah.
So we're building signs right now and not, we, we've got a long way to go on that still, but we've got some signs already planted in the ground, get some more out soon. And hopefully, I was talking to via chat with one of our team members, Justin. And I think he may have a plan. We gotta talk a little more either tonight or tomorrow, but it sounds like he has a plan for getting some yard signs out there.
Beautiful. Sounds like you got a good team kind of building up behind you. It's really exciting. One thing before we move away from the kind of anti-corruption, election reform type thing, I want to talk to about is really, especially at the county level, is have you thought about seeing how we can possibly get to like a ranked choice voting system throughout the county? Have you thought about it at all? Looked into that?
I have not looked at how to get that instituted within the county yet, but ranked choice voting is like one of my, one of my big issues nationally. I think that it should be, every voting system should be set with ranked choice voting. That's my big, that's kind of a pet peeve. I don't know if the, on the county level, how that works. If legislation can be written on the county level, I would certainly be doing before that. My, going into this, I had just assumed, maybe wrongly, that that's a state level thing. If, but if the, if the county can change it, yes, that actually that would should be part of my platform.
You mean that is part of your platform?
It is now. Yes, I have not, I have not written it out there or put it out there.
It'll be showing soon.
It shall be. That's one of the things that I pull my hair out after, after every election is that, that we don't have it.
Yeah.
So.
Beautiful. I can't wait to see that coming up. I like to go to Leah and Steve and let them see if there's any questions that you guys would like to ask and know that, you know, Clark County, there's a lot of different things going on. So get more personal here. Leah, Steve, one of you?
The first, because we just talked about ranked choice voting.
Okay.
For charter review.
Well, yeah, that's a charter review issue that people want to bring up. So that may be taken care of for you, hopefully.
Okay.
If we can get that done in the charter review and then pass that along on to the voters, because they vote on, on whatever the issues that we come up in the review to become part of the charter. So one of the questions is, what we've got going on in Clark County right now with our county chair, as you know, is systemic racism, which she says doesn't exist here in Clark County or in our country. So what's your opinion on that and what do you plan on doing about that?
Gosh, it makes it really hard to say anything nice about her. I'm sure that she's a wonderful woman to her grandkids or somebody. I, she, I listened to her statement that evening. I listened to the recording. We had an audio recording after that meeting and my head almost exploded. I mean, that just infuriated me. And I made a post about that recently. I don't know what to do about that. I, that's something, I've read through the charter at one point, but I did not study it. I don't recall seeing a measure in the charter to remove the sitting chair. Maybe there's some rules in there to do that. But if there's not, I think there should maybe in the review find instituting some sort of recall measure to get rid of somebody like that is important because there is no room for that. It's, it's tricky, you know, we all have to be careful. I don't, I don't want to call her a racist for making that statement, I think, but, but she is certainly ignorant of the situation. We do have systemic racism, racism in our, in our community. And it's been around for a long time. It's been around since I lived here. I've talked to people and I, you know, I listen to what people say and how people act. I know it's here. And I know it's in the government. Not long ago, what, 2016, there was a whole, I mean, there's, well, there's been lawsuits all along in the Sheriff's Department, the Police Department of Vancouver. The Evergreen School District just had to institute a whole new program and hire a new person in order to deal with, with diversity issues. I don't know what to do with her other than vote her out. And I'm not 100% sure on, on how much I need personally. I've said my piece on Facebook. But I also understand that at some point, hopefully, it's kind of a weird way to do it. I will be working alongside this woman for two years until, or at least another year until she is out. So somehow, you know, I, I know I'm gonna have to work with her if I win, when I win. I'm sorry, Leah, you're on mute.
Okay.
That's how you want to think, when I win?
I just, before, just before I came on here, I saw that there was a change.org petition to get her, and I was just about to sign that. I don't know if any other counselors have signed it or any other candidates have signed it. But unless I'm advised not to, I intend to sign it.
Excellent. Any other questions right now? Leah, you're on mute still, so I don't know if you were trying to say something?
Okay. Okay. So thank you for that question. So just to follow up with my husband. So you would, so you do support what Sheriff Atkins has agreed to do by taking the blue, having them take the blue line stickers off of, is he taking the blue line stickers off of the vehicles and their uniform?
Yes.
Now, there's on the vehicles, right?
On the vehicles. He bought a whole bunch of stickers for, for a fair amount of money. And now, now he's, he's seen the light. I hope, I hope Eileen Queer, Queering will, will see the light as well. I learned about that blue line sticker, not, not just, just the, the whole blue line flag, the, the Blue Lives Matter after Black Lives Matter. For me, that was the response. That was the retort to Black Lives Matter. So I understand a lot of people feel that it really is about honoring honorable police officers. However, I see it used constantly as a way to shut down the Black Lives Matter movement. So for me, instinctively, this is incredibly divisive. And I think in a lot of cases, it's just downright out racist. And I am not a guy, I'm an old white guy. I, I don't have problems with the police very often. And in most cases, I think I've had one negative experience with police officers. Most of the time, they've been there to help me. But that's my privilege, right?
So my question's gonna be on environment. I know when Eric Holt was running for, for county, he, he was supporting the community against the Chiloxu Prairie and the mine that, I guess there's a mine that is, that they're not, there's a mining, there's a company that's doing mining and they're, they let them do the overlaps. Do you know where we're standing on that right now? Are they still being allowed to not cover the trucks and allowing the air to be polluted? I know that the dust was flying, I mean, there's controversy over that mine and the Chiloxu Prairie.
Yeah, there, there's still, there's still controversy. Actually, about two weeks ago, I was invited up to talk to a couple up there, up near Yakalt. It's the Yakalt Mining.
That's at Yakalt, yeah.
Yeah, for me, for me, environment is, is probably, other than people, is the number one issue. The mine though, has a, it has a lot of problems aside from the environment as well. Well, different than what we might think. The dust is certainly an issue at times. They are not covering the trucks. According to one of the people I talked to, they've signed an agreement saying, we will cover all our trucks for this grade of rock. Well, turns out they don't even produce that grade of rock. So, so they signed an agreement with a giant loophole on purpose. Now, I haven't verified that yet, but I do trust the sources I was talking to. They, they are now finally giving people notice when they're blasting. But they are, there's still some issues there. There's still houses that vibrate and windows that rattle. I believe they still do it at night. Light pollution is one, I went out there and it's just this beautiful view from these people's house to the mountain that they're tearing down. But at nighttime, there's no city lights anywhere out there. At nighttime though, they light it up like it's a football arena, a professional football arena. So you can't even enjoy the night sky. There, there may be issues. They had the EPA come out and do some testing. One thing to know is that my understanding is the EPA's standards are much lower than Washington State's environmental standards in, for many things. And they were testing for a mineral. Sorry, I don't have the name of it. It's the scientific name of it. But they only tested around the rock pressure. I guess that's the only area that tested, but they have a big pile of dirt up there. And this mineral is a volcanic mineral and it would have settled in layers. They didn't test the big mound of dirt, which is now where the overlay, that's why they want to put these mounds of dirt on the overlay now. But that's where the wind blows and carries that dust away. They're also supposed to be planting things on that mound of dirt so that it will stay there. So it doesn't come down the mountain later. I was about two miles away, but it looked like a big mound of dirt to me. I didn't see any green on it. Historically, it looks as if that place is prone to some landslides.
Yeah.
So I, in, that's a concern because you got, you got the Lewis River right below it. You have people living right below it. And when I was up there looking at it, I kept having visions of Oso. If you remember, there was a large landslide in the town of Oso, sorry, I'm trying to fix my lighting, which killed quite a few people.
Yes.
I'm concerned about that. According to the neighbors up there, the conditional use permit that they're under has a lot of conditions that aren't being met. Mike, my question to the council is, why would you issue a conditional use permit if you cannot measure whether or not the conditions are being met? They can't even decide how, what number of trucks are traveling the roads up there. And that's a huge issue. Almost every, my dad lives kind of up in that area, but he is on the area where those trucks come through. He doesn't like it and my dad's a Republican. I mean, he's, he's, he's all for business and everything else. Well, and I'm not an anti-business, so. But the trucks move fast. They can't stop in time. A couple of them have already gone off the road nearly into the river. I've heard stories of them having to pass stopped school buses because they couldn't stop, apparently. And they are destroying the roads, which we keep paying to repave. The roads up there are not built for the, for the, for the loads. And I understand there has been issues with sediment in the river. But these things aren't proven scientifically to be done, but I don't see the county out there checking it. I don't think the county has the resources to do that. And to me, it seems like, well, this business needs to maybe pay up to make sure that we do have the resources. I'm not against rock. We all, we all use it. We all want roads. We want driveways and foundations on our homes. But we can do this much more responsibly. Since we're on the issue, my opponent, John, sat in the, the council room and all the neighbors were there talking about their complaints, talking about their issues and why this conditional use permit for the overlay should not be granted. And he turned around and told everybody that I hear you, I understand you, these, these things absolutely must be addressed. We approved this conditional use permit. And then afterwards told everybody to get along. That's, to me, that was backwards. He, he had, he had leverage at that moment over this company to do something right, to, to, fix the problems that are causing the neighbors' issues. And he could have told him, hey, look, you know what? Come back in a month. We'll all come back in a month. If everybody doesn't have all these issues, you get your permit. But he didn't do that. So I wonder who influenced that decision. It certainly wasn't the people, right?
I think Alan Queering was a big supporter of that, from my understanding. I have one more environmental question and I'll let you go. So we live above Vancouver Lake. Okay, Vancouver Lake. So part of Vancouver Lake is controlled by the county and part of it is by the city, my understanding. Have you had a chance to meet with the River Keepers? And if not, are, would you be willing to meet with the River Keepers? Because right now that lake is polluted and there's actually, I mean, you need to meet with them, but there's been lies about what's really going on in that, outside of the lake, the lake. And we're actually losing revenue because the rowing company, the rowing, the people to rowing in there, the rowing teams and stuff, were using it for competitions and sports and stuff. But because that lake is so polluted, they can't do that right now. So I think the River Keepers would be a good group of people to meet with on how to solve the solution because from listening to Anne at a city council meeting, they're not really being productive, either county or city. Basically, let's put it this way, the city's blaming the county and the county's blaming the city. They're not coming together and working up a solution to clean that lake up. And that lake is viable to this community for income and for sportsmanship and for families. So I mean, we, when we moved here into Vancouver, people were able to go to that lake and you could swim and stuff in it. But so would you be, if I can find a way to introduce to them, would you be willing to meet with the, the River Keeper, so we can figure out what's going on and what's the solution as to the problem, how to clean it?
Absolutely. I have not met with them yet, but yes, I would absolutely love to meet with them and talk about that.
Adam Aguilera, because he has contacted them. We actually have, we, when I was walking my precinct, I actually met a gentleman who moved into the neighborhood, I think about 10 years ago, and he's part of a rowing team down there. He kind of explained to us what was going on. And we've actually been in city council meetings where people who have worked on that lake trying to clean it up, they're basically being ignored. So I think we need to bring people to the table as a community and stop blaming the county and blaming the city and bringing the city and the county together so we can work together and come up with a solution, I should say.
Yeah, absolutely. I think the, the council, the county council needs to start working with all the cities a lot closer and deal with these issues. And I would love to meet with the, with the River Keepers and talk to them.
Thank you. Thank you. Tristan or Thomas, do you guys have a question? We also have Wendy on the phone. Before we do the phone, we'll see Tristan.
I do have a question. Nice to meet you, Jesse. I've read some of your platform, been following you on social media. And I noticed that you, that you gave a shout out to a project happening here in Clark County where they're experimenting with renting out tiny homes to help ease the, the cost of housing, right? Well, it seems like every major city in our country has a housing crisis and it's just becoming, you know, out of hand and unaffordable. What do you think can be done here in Clark County to make housing more affordable for, you know, young folks like me just starting out?
I'm glad you, I'm glad you mentioned that. I, I don't know if, I don't know that tiny homes is the absolute answer. I think there's a lot more to it than that, although the county did a few years ago, make it a whole lot easier, and I don't think a lot of people know about it yet, to build ADUs or tiny homes in your yards. Not long ago, we were thinking of what we were gonna do when maybe somebody like my mother-in-law is gonna need a place to stay and need a little more care. And we were thinking, well, our backyard is actually, we, we're lucky. We have a pretty large backyard. And we could build a tiny home in the backyard and have it for her. And then when it's done, you know, if more people were, anybody who can build those that have the space and the money to do so, they can also be used out as rentals. So college students that want to try to move out of their home, you know, that are going to Clark or somewhere nearby, you know, they can move out of the home, but maybe the home, oh, sorry. I, I like the idea of the county, besides doing things personally, on personal private property. I like the idea of the county taking chunks of land that they own and building not just a couple tiny homes, but a tiny home community. And they, they need to be placed strategically and put them on bus lines, bus routes. And I think they should have community gardens and then, you know, make them look nice and make them livable. And I think this would be a great way, a great way for transitional housing for people who are getting off the street and need a roof right now. And then, you know, as they get employment or if they need, you know, services in order to help get their lives on track, once they are on track and they're able to move out, then you got another place for, for low-income people to go. Now, Vancouver is doing it for a rent-to-own program. And I think that's also a good idea to look at. Initially, when I was thinking about it, and of course, I'm up to all sorts of ideas, but when I was looking at it, I was thinking of it being as a traditional, transitional housing for people that need to, need a home now for, for women coming from women's shelters. for, for women coming from women's shelters or, or even people that are trying to get off the streets from homelessness. But permanent housing solution is also a good idea. I don't think the rent-to-own idea is a bad one. But I would like to, I would like to focus a little bit more on trying to get people that don't have a roof over their head, get them something. But I do think that, that, that's one solution. Now, the end of next year, the county did put out a started projects, they started a project to address housing affordability. I don't know what the, but so if I'm, if I'm on, when I'm on the council next year, I will have a chance to see what the results of those studies are. And I'm, I'm looking forward to that because I'm open to any idea that will address this problem.
Great response. Thanks.
Thank you, Tristan. How about Thomas? Thomas, do you have a question?
I do. So, of course, with all the, like, how do I put it? The brutality done by cops that we have been seeing more and more often, which is horribly sad. What, what do you, what's your stance on having body cams on all police officers and not having, and not giving them the option to turn it off?
Absolutely. No, I'm, I'm a hundred percent for body cams, vehicle cams. My, my understanding originally, as of a few weeks ago, Sheriff Atkins for our sheriff's department, the excuse for not getting them was the money. You know, it's, I guess that's a good excuse. It's a convenient excuse. They seem to come up with money for other things. However, his, his tune has changed in the last few days. He has now said that they are looking for doing body cams. And they should. Now, this ties into a different thing, but if expense truly is an issue, well, we can fix that. First of all, there's something else that I just recently made a video about. The Eugene, the city of Eugene has the Kahoots program. And that's a program to supplement the police. And so they have a medic and a social worker that are trained in de-escalation techniques. And they are also trained to, to show empathy towards the persons that they're dealing with. In Eugene, about 20% of their calls, of nine 11 calls, that the police would address, go to these guys. These guys go out and deal with the solution without using a uni, wearing a uniform. And they're able to de-escalate issues. They're able to help people that are having a mental health crisis. If they need to, they can transfer them to the correct clinic that can help. If somebody's having an overdose, they can help them with, right there on the scene with that. I think one of the examples I used was, you know, if, if a couple of guys are fighting at a party, rather than calling the police, you can call these guys. And not only can they calm the situation down, they can get these guys home. You know, they can wake up the next morning and in bed instead of in jail. So that has saved Eugene, the city of Eugene, eight and a half million dollars over, every year for a period of several years. Now, if you can save eight and a half million dollars a year, you can afford your body cameras, right? You could probably afford a lot of things. And you also, now the police, the law enforcement are now free to go do more important things and take care of real crime where people's lives really truly are in danger. Or, or where people are, you know, being burgled. You know, you're not gonna send a social worker to a burglary or, or an armed robbery. The, the police can handle those things. This puts less people in our jail is old and it's overcrowded. So we arrest less people. Quit throwing people in jail that don't need to go into jail, right? So we're gonna save, if we were to do something like that, we'll save a ton of money. Lives will be better, not broken. I, I think all, overall, it would make a community a whole lot better. Eugene is very successful. Counties and cities all over the country are copying them. They're our neighbors, pretty much. I, I think it's time we start learning some lessons from, from our neighbors.
I have the answer. Thank you.
So Jimmy T's on YouTube and he's been commenting on things. If anybody wants to go, look at that. A couple of things. It says, study desperate impact fee as a housing solution can be done by ordinance. Another thing you said is, yes, you can fix it. That was Atkins' way of saying, you write the code and set the policy. So I think he's talking about the council of written legislation. And then there's a question, he said marijuana shops in the county, question mark. I'm not sure where he's asking specifically about marijuana shops in the county. I know that there were some places that weren't allowed and I'm not sure if that's what he's trying to figure out, what's in place right now.
We can tell you what's going on. They were. Okay, so when.
Wait, 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 let's let the candidate speak about where the his thoughts on the marijuana, on the marijuana shop in the county.
Right around where I live, the marijuana shops are open and they're working. I am for marijuana shops being open. I'm for the sale of marijuana. I'm for the taxing of marijuana, but I do think the best case scenario is that people grow their own and share it. But that's really, that's really my best.
Be loud on that one. I know so many people are ready for that, like, growing their own. Thank you.
Absolutely.
I want to give, Wendy is on the phone. I want to give Wendy an opportunity to ask a question. And then was that Sarah still as well? And then Franklin might have something for you. Wendy? Oh, let me, let me unmute you. Okay, there you go.
Okay, you can hear me, huh? All right. Hi, everyone. Hello, who's here? Hey, Jesse. So actually, I've gotten to spend from the, pretty much the beginning, a lot of time working with Jesse. So I just wanted to tell everybody that I am just really impressed on how well and completely he listens, takes notes and follows through and actually is really teaching himself about a lot of local issues he didn't know. And now he's got a better grasp on them than I do. What I've been telling them about. So just want to put that out there. So I don't really have a lot of questions because, you know, we've been talking pretty much constantly throughout the process, but I didn't hear if you addressed the urban growth boundary because I came on 15 minutes late. Did you talk about that?
I don't think I did. But, but it was, I did talk about the Growth Management Act, our 20-year plan. And that I think that we need to stick to it as best as we, as best we can and try to strengthen it. And I don't think that the, the urban growth boundaries should not be changed until it's absolutely necessary to do so. I think it's important to limit growth as much as possible. The growth is expensive, for one thing, and it's also detrimental to the climate. You start moving people out further away from where they work, they gotta drive further. You gotta transport more things back and forth. So, and you gotta build more, you gotta pave over more land. I think that we need to increase urban densities before we start spreading out. I like to say that we need to grow up before we grow out.
That's all I've got.
Thank you, Wendy.
Thanks. You can meet me again.
Okay, I did. All right. We got Sarah. Sarah, would you have anything you want to talk with Jesse about?
Well, actually, both Tristan and Thomas asked the questions that I was gonna ask. I like his, I like answers, so I can't think of another question I have at the moment. So I was very impressed with his answers. So that's all I have. Sorry.
Thank you, Sarah. I did see Franklin here. Did you want to ask your question, go into that Franklin yourself, or do you want me to read it? No answer. So it's, so he says, how does Jesse feel about worker-owned cooperatives? Industrial hemp, glyphosate? Any of, so I guess there's a few different ones there. So how do you feel about worker-owned cooperatives first?
I, I like worker-owned cooperatives. I think that's, that's a good way to go. Kitty cats running all over the place here. Industrial hemp, I'm, I'm for that. As a matter of fact, I, I was sitting here the other day thinking, well, you know, if we wanted to grow industry in our, in our town, what would we, what would we do? Well, personally, I want as many clean businesses as possible. I prefer to have low-carbon industry. But hemp can be used for so many different things and if, you know, from hempcrete, you know, maybe we could change some of our, maybe we change some of our building materials, mine a little less rock. If we were able to use things like hempcrete or even, even making textiles. I'm for industrial hemp and if we have farmlands that aren't being used, I think that's actually a really great use of the farmlands. Glyphosate, I, glyphosate, sorry. Scientific words, I'm not always, always. I, I, I think that's roundup, right? I do not like it and I, I, from what I understand, it's very cancerous and causes a lot of health issues. So it certainly should not be used on a wide scale. I don't think farms should be spraying it where it can get into our water supplies or even, you know, our groundwater or our rivers. I, I'm for a ban on that kind of stuff. I, I, I think it's, there's gotta be better ways. So, what is it, multi, suddenly I forgot the words, where you have many different crops together rather than monoculture? I know there's a word for that and it just, I just left my mind.
That's the right word, but promoculture is more of the using all the things together versus monoing, yes.
Right. And from what I understand, that, that can have a lot of benefits for protecting crops against different insect pests and, and some invasive weeds. And I, I think there's a lot better ways to do things and we need to start looking ways to do things differently than we used to. When it comes to, to farming and, and trying to protect our planet and our, our food and, and our water and our air.
Excellent. So we've been at this for almost an hour now. So unless there's anything real pressing that anybody hasn't asked, that they really want to, I want to give you just a quick opportunity to make sure that you, you're, speak about anything that you really wanted to hit on today first. And then we'll have you kind of go out and give us a good spiel and where to find you out in the social media land.
Sure. I, I think that, gosh, you guys had so many good questions and I think most of them are, are right. That I've already, we addressed most of everything that I wanted to talk about. The, uh, trying to keep the, the money and the influence of money out of the politics is just around, uh, round everything up is one of the most important things to me. Because I think, I think corruption is what's wrong with pretty much all government. I'm not against government. I think we need government, but good government, money has to get out of it. The trying to start a new Kahoots program or something similar to Kahoots in, in our county is something that's, again, very important to me because defund the police is, that's everywhere right now. And I think that's the way to do it, because we don't want to get rid of all the police, right? I mean, we still, we still want somebody to show up when someone's pointing a gun at us, right? But we do need to start taking care of our people and, and public safety means that you don't have to throw people in jail. Necessarily. And now, tonight, I'll be writing a, a post on ranked choice voting. Because that, that is near and dear to my heart and I, I can't believe I haven't actually written anything on that one yet. So I will be doing that. I'm running because I, you know, because I care and I, I want to provide a future for our children. I think climate change has to be part of every decision the council makes. If, if climate change is at all part of any decision, it has to be considered and it has to be considered seriously. And that's the, to me, that is the biggest threat globally in the world we have right now. And there's a lot of threats out there. But to me, that is the one. So, you know, we need a Green New Deal and if, if we're not gonna get it from Washington, we better start doing it here at home, right? And we need to start taking care of people. Public health means taking care of public health. And if, if that means taking some jobs, some, some power away from the police, we need to do that. Qualified immunity, I forgot to mention that. I do not know if our sheriff's department or our, or our police department have, their unions have qualified immunity in their contracts. But if they do, it needs to go. And also a prevailing wage for any, any kind of construction projects or work projects that the county gets involved with. We need to start looking at having a prevailing wage because that benefits everybody in the county. So those, those are a few of the things that, that, that I really want to do and I hope we can make happen.
Excellent. So yeah, yeah, go ahead and, go ahead.
Elect Jesse James dot com. And also just elect Jesse James for Facebook.
He's got some great wanted signs out there that you guys have to see. Hopefully we'll see some of them. Is that what your signs are gonna look like around town?
Yes, the, the wanted pictures without my face, because I already have a mustache and we don't need people drawing another one. But yes, it, it does say, wanted Jesse James or Clark County Council District.
Yeah, we have some people in our group that are very envious of your name right now. They're like, oh, to only be able to have a wanted sign like that. So really exciting. I appreciate you taking time out and talking with us and looking for our endorsement. I know that Leah will be getting the sent out ASAP. We'll get some votes and then we'll get, hopefully to work in with you very, very soon.
Thank you so much, Rhonda and everybody else. Thank you. It was great to see you, especially all of you that have live photos up. But I like Franklin's turtle as well.
All right, go ahead and stay on for just a second while we stop the live share. Thank you all and see you later.